Testimony oath of presenters, please be advised if you are here to present today, you are under oath before the Commissioners' Court. 1.5 Public comments. 1.6 Approval of minutes of regular meeting of August 5th, 2024 and special meeting August 16th, 2024.
Judge of Superior Court to table August 16th minutes, they're not ready.
The August 16th minutes are not ready. I'll entertain a motion to approve the regular meetings of August 5th, 2024 and to table the special minute, special meeting, excuse me, minutes from August 16th, 2024.
Uh huh.
I have a motion by Commissioner Alonso Carmona, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Urdenda. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposition? Motion carries. 2.1 We have a presentation of an award for adult probation services. It is my honor today to welcome the probation office of Dimmitt, Maverick, and Savala and Chief Wahado here today in honoring one of our very own now that we have working here in Dimmitt County, more importantly, working at my department. And I've been, quite frankly, blessed to have him in my department. He's been such a team player. He's always eager to work, always there to lend a helping hand, and I can genuinely say that any time that I can call him and ask him, he always executes and he does it so professionally and eloquently. So I can just imagine what words Chief Wahado and his staff have. But I'm going to go ahead and bring forward Chief Wahado with the Adult Probation Office so that he may present this special award before Commissioners' Court and before the public that's here today. Chief.
Your Honor, thank you so much for allowing us to be here today, Commissioners. Good morning. Pretty much what you said, Your Honor, that over the years, we had the honor of having employed an officer with the Dimmitt County Probation Department. He was with us for 28 years, Mr. James M. Gonzalez, and he left our employment. He's been certainly missed. And exactly what you said, that his loyalty and his hard work and friendship above all things are solely missed. And this award has been pretty much sitting in our office for the last eight months. Mr. Gonzalez, Officer Gonzalez left our department in December of 2023. And again, after 28 years of service and on behalf of the officers and staff of the Maverick, Dimmitt, and Savala County Adult Probation Department, we would like to extend this plaque to James M. Gonzalez for your timeless service and dedication to the Community Supervision and Corrections Department. 28 years of loyalty and service to the county and to the probation department. Thank you, James, again. I've told you this many times, and our staff knows it, that we miss you at the department. We miss you for many reasons, because you were quite the employee that exhibited loyalty and we miss your friendship above all things. And I'm so glad that you feel, take good, aren't you? Good job, and God bless you and your future endeavors and you need chapter in luck. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Yes.
You're open to vote for each of your members here?
Yes.
You're on the second.
Yes. Thank you so much. The last thing. I'm sorry. 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 I'm sorry.
2.2 We have donation from SM Energy for the community garden in Catarina, Texas. Commissioner Lucca.
Judge, I was approached by Ms. Lillings. She wanted to know if we could, SM, donate the funding for the garden and can we do a sale. They don't come to the county, but they might know first we can say.
Yeah. So for donations, we're just, it's not, it's just a formality. We put it on the agenda so you can go ahead and accept that donation since we already put it on here. And thank you, I think, SM here. Thank you guys very much for assisting Dimmitt County, more importantly, Commissioner Lucca was precinct and everything that you guys do for our county. It is greatly appreciated.
And wants to be the dog.
You can bring him back, yes. 3.1 Approval of bonds.
No bonds.
No action. 3.2 Discussion and appropriate action approval to use the pavilion and fairgrounds at 201 Southport Street on October 19th, 2024 for the 11th Annual Cancer Walk and Loteria Chamber of Commerce. Good morning, Ms.
Good morning, Judge. Good morning, Commissioners.
Good morning.
This is just our annual cancer walk that we've had for the last couple of years and just asking permission, Your Honor, to use the pavilion and fairgrounds.
Any questions? You have a question, Mr. Goodwin? No. Are there any questions? I'll entertain a motion.
Motion.
Motion by Commissioner Lucca, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Urdenda, further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposition? Motion carries. Thank you. Have a good day, yes, ma'am.
Thank you.
3.3 Discussion and appropriate action approval of notary approval for DPS administrative Are there any questions on this item?
Motion.
I have a motion by Commissioner Alonso Carmona, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Lucca. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposition? Motion carries. 3.4 Discussion and appropriate action presentation of drafted county road use agreement form previously provided to county referencing the road use related to utility scale battery storage project roads ports in Dimmitt County.
Good morning, Judge.
Good morning.
Good morning, Commissioners. My name is Saul Strout. I work for San Somo. We come for you today to request a roadie agreement to use Barker Loop Road on Miles South of Tinkus for battery storage. There we are.
Are there any questions?
When you say to use this farm market road.
1867.
What?
Farm market, 1867? Yes, sir.
But there are, that road doesn't belong to the county.
That's the state road. Yes, sir, state highway. Barker Loop lands the county.
1867 is state?
18, the farm market road, yes, sir, from Big Mills to the projects.
But why are you needing for us to approve it?
We need to approve for Barker Loop Road, which is when, it's, yeah, Barker Loop Road. I think I've been in contact with somebody from.
Somebody from there, yes.
And my, my response to your request basically was, I mean, it is county road.
Commissioner, can we talk into the mics? Because unfortunately, these big black screens are covering faces and then the people can't hear you off the mic.
So it's a county, it's a county road that's accessible to anybody who needs to have access to it. The only time the county gets involved, if you have any type of utilities crossing the road or any type of driveways that are going to be installed for whatever reason. Other than that, we don't really have any type of restriction for you to be allowed to use the road. So, yeah, I don't think you'd have an important factor at this point.
I'm going to, my head, talk.
I've been speaking, I believe, with Ms. Melissa Mead, who had mentioned the road use too. We, if, you know, the road use agreement in front of you guys is the one that we've had recently put in place with other counties when they don't require a road use. Like, it's a very simple form, but it's just sort of a protection on both ends. However, if it's not something that the county wants to move forward with, we can most likely have either a signed letter or something on the county letterhead that just says we don't require one. The problem we ran into previously was the email correspondence that we had where she mentioned that she had, you know, asked you about the road use agreement, not from a county email address, it's from a off email address. So we're unfortunately not able to use that, you know, if we just want to do a mail or a letter, we would request it beyond like an official county email or signed by somebody from my city.
Okay, so what you're requesting is a signed document from the county?
It just says.
I have, I have a copy of that. It's just essentially, when I reached out to you last March, when I asked about the permit, it was where you told me, we, your Dimmitt County doesn't require our permits in unincorporated areas. That was essentially just a, you know, one sentence email. I have that in paper. Just, I mean, something so you guys could see it. And it gives our management, I guess, the sign off that you guys are aware, we tried to come to with road use agreement and your letter.
So essentially, what you're requesting is more for purposes of assuring your company?
Well, I mean, the road use agreement wouldn't show all this. I mean, it would be, there would be assurances in there for, I mean, not a discount. And if you guys did decide to move forward with this road use agreement, I would very much recommend you put in provisions that would make you feel comfortable.
The, the only other question I have is, I guess, unless you're going to do road work on the county roads, then it does require action from the.
Correct.
Yeah.
So I don't know if that's what you're basing it on here.
I don't know if it's, if it's a paved road, if it's, if it's not, it's collegiate.
Yes, but, you know, with, you're using it and let's just say you feel like generous enough to fix part of the road or something like that, that needs to come under an agreement. And it comes before.
And that's exactly, yeah, that's exactly what we're trying to do is, I mean, I don't want to enter, I don't want the justice, I don't want those lawsuits. I'd rather have it in writing that we have, you know, there's an agreement between both parties that should something happen to the roads, we are going to fix them if there are damages. Like, I mean, I also don't want it to be that if there are damages and there's no road use agreement, then the county comes for us because there's something that you guys perceive as evil at fault. So, I mean, it was just, I feel like, well, we all feel like it would be everyone's interest to have an agreement in place.
This is the first time I see this, like, you got this way before.
Yes, sir. And I welcome a red line. I welcome, I mean, additions to.
My next question, you already got permission to build this stuff?
Yes, sir, we have an agreement with the landowner.
Yes.
And we have.
From the county? You don't need one from the county?
We don't need.
No.
We don't need a commission from the county.
Mr. G.
Yes, sir.
If they're going to access our road, will they, I know they're asking for, for the lines probably here, but not.
It hasn't been cleared, but limited information, we've seen some emails from Commissioner Urdenda, and they wanted to do a lottery, sign a document saying there's no permits required, and said, no, they give to Commissioner's Court, but the Commissioner's Court decided that issue, because you cannot, you can't make a decision. You don't need it.
No, he's talking about the roads, not the actual use of the property. Use of the property, then you have to ask the landowner because it belongs to the landowner. That, we can't.
We're talking about county road.
Yeah, he's talking about county road.
But it connects to the county road. The way I see it here is right on the edge of the county road.
Yeah, hey, if there's going to be any restrictions to their use of county roads, they need to use the road. If there's going to be weight limits, place on their use of the county road, this is what it's meant to be. I don't know the extent of what their use is going to be, and I haven't seen any proposed agreement that will be put out there, so it's hard to make a comment on that.
When you say batteries, what kind of hazard material you all had in there?
Yes, exactly.
That's what I'm getting at. You still have, if you use a county road, you have hazardous material, right?
Sure.
So how are you going to compensate the county if something like this up there?
That's what we're discussing, this agreement.
That's what I'm thinking, but we haven't said it yet. I mean, even the hazardous material is something that if the landowner is willing to risk, then that's fine, but not ours.
And that's why we're here discussing this agreement, whether or not, I mean, we can, quite frankly, just table it and go into further discussion of what, the ramifications of that occurs. This is about the roads. This is not about the use of the property.
I would say we table it and everything, I would like to just, just one vote.
Can you talk into the mic, Commissioner?
Let's go ahead. My recommendation is we table it, get everything straightened out, but of course, I'm only one vote, so if the other commissioner decides to do it, I hope you just go ahead.
We absolutely would appreciate your time and your work at it, any commentary that you guys have and feedback. We are, you know.
I'm sorry, I can't hear you.
We're here in the spirit of wanting to protect the county and, and, you know, do our work correctly, so we welcome any commentary. Do you guys have a deadline to get all this approved? Sooner or later, of course, but, you know, we have been emailing with the county, I would say actually, since maybe last November or December, trying to get some commentaries on this exact purpose. We've recently included Barker Loop Road, Barker Loop Road as one of our other potential roads, which is what has sort of kicked us into high here, because we're wanting to make sure that you guys are aware that we will be using that road. We don't, there may be, to the extent of improvements, if you will, just to make sure the road is safe for the trucks or whatever, but maybe coming through, so.
I'm going to ask for, I'm going to ask for us to, a motion to table any action in particular for this agreement and to authorize the county judge to seek legal counsel, to have the proper language for this agreement so that we can put it before Commissioners' Court to ease everyone's mind in what the ramifications may or may not be if something were to occur with the roads.
And specifically, it needs to be in here also, is any repairs being made by the county, it needs to be made to protect that specifications, especially in our bridges.
Can I get a motion?
Motion. I think it's one. Oh, you did.
Commissioner Carmona, are you going to make that motion?
Yes.
To authorize the county judge to seek legal counsel too?
I'll second it.
I have a second by Commissioner Urdenda. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposition? Motion carries. Thank you very much, and we'll keep in contact with you. If you can stop by my office, I don't think I have your information, I do have his, but if you can get me your information so that we can have legal reach out, thank you.
Judge, can I have a second?
Yes. Mark, Mr. Mendez.
Thank you, Mr. Mendez. 3.5 Discussion and appropriate action approval, approval of MOU between Creosote Springs Consolidated Independent School District and Dimmitt County. As you can recall, ladies and gentlemen, the MOU that we had the last time that we tabled it because there was a concern over some of the language, we reviewed it, my office has reviewed it, we did correct some of the items specifically that we are going to carry on this MOU from year to year. Initially, it was a five-year term. We redacted that and corrected it to reflect one year, a year-to-year MOU, so we have to come back every year to come renew the MOU. Excuse me. So with that being said, I will entertain a motion to approve the MOU between CISD and Dimmitt County.
So move.
Motion by Commissioner, give me one second, Commissioner Alonso Carmona, yes.
I'm sorry, if it was already approved, then we could go, but we just didn't want it to be aired out for, for safety reasons, out loud, like where it was going to be and stuff. So we wanted to see if we could take it to, if anything needed to be discussed, maybe we could do it in executive session. But if it's, if it's going to be approved, we'll just take it.
Give me one second. One second, okay. So you're requesting to go on executive session?
No, if it's going to be approved, we'll take it, if it's going to be approved, the way that we have it, the way that it was sent back to us with the changes, then that's fine like that. It was just that there was going to be any discussion on it, and like on the place we have, for security reasons, we can't have it aired out of where it's going to be. But if it's going to be approved, we'll leave it at that. We don't have to go into executive session. We just want to take the same.
I think we're okay.
Okay.
I have a motion by Commissioner Alonso Carmona, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Urdenda. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Yes, sir.
Any opposition? Motion. We have one abstention, we have Commissioner Lucca. Motion carries. 3.6 Discussion and appropriate action approval to advertise for EMS bids. As you are well aware, we do have our budget coming up, and prior to budget approval, we do fund the emergency medical services. The contract is obviously coming up, and we are, I'm asking just for the approval to advertise the bids on all medias, whether it be the newspaper, the local newspaper, Middle Real Grand, any platform in which allows us to put bids. I know Commissioner Alonso had mentioned some time back about putting bids to reach Dallas and other places, so this is just to give me the authority to advertise for those EMS bids. I'll entertain a motion. Motion by Commissioner Alonso Carmona, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Urdenda. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposition? Motion carries. 3.7 Discussion and appropriate action approval of order regarding historical courthouse mandate. Quite frankly, this is more of a formality, but I'm going to put it in a motion. As you are well aware, at the last Commissioners' Court meeting, we had Commissioner Lucca motion, and then we had Commissioner Urdenda second, in which we mandated the 365th District Court and District Court Judge to vacate the historical courthouse until further notice, until all issues and concerns were rectified and that therefore he must move forward in utilizing the third floor District Courtroom or the first floor County Courtroom. And in the alternative, if those were not available, then the, based on the availability of the rodeo arena, he would be able to utilize that. That was a oral order that was issued by this court in terms of the motions put in place and then unanimously voted by the court. However, as a precautionary measure and because Judge Abas Scott has requested a formal order signed by the judge and the commissioners, I am going to, and on the advice of the county attorney, I put this item on here just to authorize us to reduce it into a paper order I'll entertain a motion.
Motion.
Motion by Commissioner Urdenda, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Alonso Carmona. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposition?
Aye.
Excuse me? Is he going to use first floor, third floor?
So the third.
And the arena.
He's going to use the third floor first, you'll get with Ms. Madi. If that's not available, then we have the first floor to use, and if that's not available, then the rodeo arena. However, I did, as we discussed the last time, we do have paying constituent, paying individuals that, that have priority over the rodeo arena since they pay for it and have voted since in advance. So he just wants something to pay for, to say that that's what we're trying to do. You're opposing?
I oppose.
You didn't oppose. Commissioner Lucca, is there one? We have one opposition, and that's Commissioner Juan Ariz. Motion carries. 3.8 Discussion and appropriate action approval to authorize county judge to direct a purchase for the sports complex using the tips. Again, Commissioners, this is a formality, if you will, in reviewing the documents from previous projects from the previous administration with the previous county judge pointed, we pretty much piggyback off of that in regards to how it was operated in the past here in Dimmitt County. So we just pretty much transferred the language from those projects to include this courthouse and the arena so that we could purchase the items through the tips. The tips is pretty much the equivalent of buy board. The TIPS is pretty much the equivalent of Byboard. I'll entertain a motion.
Motion.
Motion by Commissioner Venda, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Alonso Carmona. Any further discussion?
Didn't we have tips already on the?
We do, Commissioner.
Oh, but the word?
See? Yes, sir.
I understand.
Yes, sir. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposition? Motion carries. 3.9 Discussion and Appropriate Action: Approval to Authorize County Judge to Negotiate with Low Bidders on the Dimmitt County Sports Complex and Finalize the Contract. Again, Commissioners, same language, same terminology, we do have, as you remember, the bidders, and we're requesting to go with the lowest bidder for the sports complex and to allow the county judge to keep negotiating so that we can perhaps decrease the amount that was bidding.
Motion.
Motion by Commissioner Uranda, is there a second? I'm going to second that. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposition? Yes, ma'am.
On the bidding, I know the lowest was 20 million on the bidding, so it's going to get lower than that.
It's going to go less. To authorize me to negotiate and get the final contract, and once we get that number, I'll bring it back to Commissioners' Court. But yes, we're trying to bring it down. Right now, we've brought it down to about 18, 17.
17?
Yes. From that lowest bidder. Yes, sir.
Even though we can accept that long bid in Commissioners' Court, it is still?
Correct.
Negotiated?
It can still be negotiated, yes.
That's the question I had.
No, no, essentially what I did, and Mr. Paredes, I guess, can attest to this because I'm a brand-new judge, essentially, I got the language of what Frank Bonse had before in Commissioners' Court, I mean, it's in the minutes, we got it from when y'all approved for the rodeo arena, when you guys approved for this building, pretty much got that same language and put it onto this one. It's just a different judge.
We came in, all the work was already done, so that's why.
And the CSA as well. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposition? Motion carries. 3.10 Discussion and Appropriate Action: Monthly Report from JP Precinct 1, Ms. Sonia Guerrero-Perez for the month of July 2024.
She's off today.
I'm gonna, she advised that she is out today, so I'm going to request a motion to table.
Mm-hmm.
Motion to table by Commissioner Alonso Carmona, I have a second by Commissioner Uranda. Any discussion? Yes.
Because I'm going to have a question this morning. Are we going to continue to table when they're not here just for the reports, or I thought we were going to table, they were going to purchase. I mean, because there's, we have somebody here that can do the, go over the report, but if we have questions, and I'll, I'll meet, we can table it, I just want to make sure that we're going to continue to table all these reports.
Can Ms. Unfaro come and report?
Yes.
I think we need to table it since we table everything else. Mr. Keith, do we have to hold a formal agreement with that, or?
We don't have to, Commissioner, it's, it's, it is the Commissioners' Court to decide whether, if you, if you want, if you want to table it, then we table it. If you don't want to table it, then we'll table it. We make a vote, if Commissioner Dubucava wants to approve it without somebody being here, and we, the majority votes that we approve without a person representing, then we can do that. It's up to you.
She's right, she's right on some way table and some way home, so that's the only one, that's the only thing I'm asking, do we table all of them, or do we keep going like we vote?
That's why we can discuss, it's open for discussion. If that's what you want to do, and the vote is for us to approve, to have them here, then we have to have them here, and we table them.
I think it's more, if we table it, because if we have questions at the.
I agree with you.
And, and, a person that comes on here, her secretary comes here, or her proxy is here, she can answer the questions, so how can we move forward with?
I agree.
With approval of the JP?
So essentially, Commissioner Dubucava?
So are we going to be tabling all the reports and then agreeing to purchase, to approve the purchases? Do they bring the backup to the purchase, so which ones are going to be, is it going to be both, or one, or the other? Because I'm already tired that everything has to be tabled. I have four items from the past four Commissioners' Courts that have been tabled because I'm not here. So are we going to table that too?
I agree.
That's what I want to know.
I think we should.
There's times that we can't be here, so many times you're like, the official can't be here, they bring the backup, they have their backups, and it gets tabled.
And it got tabled, from my distinct understanding, is that because if we have questions and you're not here to answer the questions, then we table it.
And we bring somebody, that's why we send our supervisor or our right hand to come and present to us what we have or what we're purchasing. So are we going to continue? I mean, I'm just going to vote.
What I'm concerned about is sometimes we send a proxy, and then the proxy doesn't, doesn't give me the answers we're looking for.
And that's what happened the last time, we had somebody here, and Commissioner Juan asked, you asked questions, and they didn't have the answers, remember, Commissioner? And that's why you asked to table it?
And if we vote, it's just like, well, I don't know, all they told me was to bring this, that's their statement.
Correct.
The majority voted to go for, to table, and I vote against. That's my vote.
How many motions to table, Judge?
You're going to motion to table?
Second.
Motion by Commissioner Alonso Carmona, is there a second? Or Commissioner Uranda? Further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposition?
Aye.
I have one opposition, Commissioner Dubucava. 3.12 Discussion and Appropriate Action: Monthly Report from JP Precinct 3, Ms. Letizia Hernandez for the month of July 2024. I am so sorry, I read it wrong. I apologize, I know you're not Ms. Letizia, but go ahead, Judge Hernandez.
It's like a cowboy hat. My fault.
Martin?
Good morning. I'm going to find you a contempt, Commissioner Juan Carmona. I apologize. Let me look at your report, Judge.
Judge, have we, have you all been getting the same amount of citations like before? No?
They're less. We've gotten less tickets.
That's what, that's what I'm seeing, that you.
The numbers are decreasing. Judge Hernandez, you, just on pure speculation, I guess, would you know why the numbers are going, like, why you're not receiving as many tickets?
Well, I did ask, and they said because there was less traffic on 85 than more traffic is in Katerina, all of that area, so that's why.
Other questions?
Motion to approve.
I have a motion by Commissioner Alonso Carmona.
Second.
I have a second by Commissioner Uranda. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposition? Motion carries. Thank you so much, Judge. 3.11 Discussion and Appropriate Action: Monthly Report from JP Precinct 2, Mr. Alberto Escivell for the month of July 2024.
Good morning.
Good morning, Judge.
Judge, you guys, your secretary plugs into citations for the constable, right?
Yes. When we're breaking? Yes.
Motion to approve.
I have a motion by Commissioner Alonso Carmona.
Second.
I have a second by Commissioner Dubucava. Any discussion? Go ahead, Commissioner.
No, for you.
Oh, you have a question for me? Yes, sir.
Aren't there two people supposed to assist the coming also in stuffed vehicles? Or only there to here for, for illegal?
I would suppose that their job requires them to traffic state highways, but, I mean, I guess that's a conversation we can have with the sheriff and Captain Ben, court over at Texas Highway Patrol. He's, the question is, Sheriff, is whether DPS is obligated to assist you in making traffic stops? Or not necessarily assist you, but also in conjunction with you, your deputies, to make traffic stops to increase revenue?
How do you think they're obligated? Do they work under their own?
Correct. So I think the better thing to do is to sit down and have a discussion with DPS to see if they're willing to maybe send more black and whites to patrol Dimmitt County.
The reason I'm asking, because I have had vehicles pass me, and I'm going with 75, and they pass me like if I'm standing still, I call your office, and they say you don't have anybody there around that area at that time, which is understandable, but, you know, is he a drooper, and he's got, he's facing this way, the truck goes by there, and they don't even bless their lives, slow down or nothing, they just keep going. That's the reason I was asking.
I can't address that one, but I mean, I mean, with us, yeah, I can't have anybody who want to place it, because sometimes I'll bring them back for four or other.
No, no, I understand that, I must say, my question is, aren't they supposed to assist you for a traffic stop? That's my question, that DPS.
I don't believe it is, but they work their, I mean, their own hours, and their.
That's the, I don't know.
I see them stop traffic on 9th Street. A couple of times, I've been in parties on 9th Street. The group is here. Yeah, on several locations, I've seen them on 9th Street, and they have stopped, not very often, but I've seen them.
I think that's, that would be ours, not the ones that work here for rent, the ones that do exhibitions like these, but the ones that are from the regional areas, I've seen them there.
We can, we can perhaps sit down, we can have you sit down in on the conversation, Commissioner Juan, so that you can voice your concerns to DPS. Thank you. Other questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposition? Motion carries. Thank you, Judge.
Thank you.
3.13 Discussion and Appropriate Action: Monthly Report from JP Precinct 4, Mr. Alfredo Martinez for the month of July 2024.
Good morning, Your Honor.
Good morning.
Judge.
Yes, sir.
I don't see your monthly revenue on this page, I wonder if there's some mistake?
It's blank.
It's like this, Judge. It's blank?
Yes, sir.
That is so big.
No, but you have it on the last page, I can see it, Judge, right there, but we have a blank. Yeah, we don't have that. Yes, we don't have that.
Oh, okay.
Can we see yours, if you don't mind, please?
Yes, yes.
Because we don't have that copy.
We actually had a pretty good month, elected 46,000. In total, 46,833.
Okay, because yours is 25,000.
It's going to split when it comes to the state and the county retaining the.
Send to, send out the state.
Keep that.
Do y'all need copies? Copies, Commissioner? Are there any further questions?
Motion to approve.
I have a motion by Commissioner Uranda. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Dubucava, discussion?
I have some information for you guys. On the second page, the first page, it has the citations issued out by the constables in the top part.
Second page.
The first page.
Where it says Jose Galoan?
Yes. It'll do the citations. When the constables come in and give their report, that's why I'm going to tell you guys they don't match. That's why I've been asking, have they do all the citations, or they input the citations where they input on a later date after a month, which is, maybe that's the reason, but every month is a different number. But I know we can't put a quote on how many citations they can give.
Correct.
But it doesn't, they don't match.
Well, I can tell you this much, in looking at Constable Precinct 4, that doesn't match with the report we give.
I have another question, Mr. Martinez. On illegal dumping, have you got any citations?
Not this past month, I believe a couple of months ago, we did.
The previous month?
Two, three months ago, yes.
That was the last time you got a citation?
Yes.
Okay.
For illegal dumping.
I'll sit down with you to go over it. We have a lot of illegal dumping in Carrizo Hill, and I told Mr. Gonzalez, there was a citation, we wouldn't have to do, because we have the people from Carrizo Hill dumping in empty properties. I mean, it costs $500 to go throw it at the landfill, and they're just using our county roads.
Yeah, that's from Weston.
They use Bosso Road, La Martita, and Katerina's, just to go through the trash, and that's why it makes it look very sore-eyed to see it.
Don't we have somebody that works that takes care of that, like, so we can give him citations?
Correct. Mr. Gonzalez, he's a code-in for sure.
Okay, that's fine. You take him to my office, we'll find him.
All in favor? Yes, sir.
I have a question. How long are we going to continue putting the, into the system the information on the tickets? The reason is because I'm out of part-time money, and I need my actual part-time employee, and there's still money in the budget, so like right now, and, and they're bringing me like 75 tickets every week, 85 tickets, while, while I see other precincts getting 40, 10, 11. That's my only question, I don't know how long it's going to be that we're going to continue putting everything into the system.
Mr. Paredes, Mr. Paredes is not here, but my distinct understanding, Judge, is that that was taken care of about two weeks ago. I don't know if his office has reached out to you or not, obviously, it seems like they haven't, but I know that he did advise me, he had reached out to Judge Sonia already and advised her that the INTEC was what you guys were going to continue to use, so perhaps maybe reaching out to Mr. Paredes, because he is the one that has that contract with them.
Do you don't have any funding?
No funding. I thought I had a little bit, but they corrected my budget amendment early this morning.
He does, but they ran out of money.
And the thing is, we, we have a lot of tickets in my office, and, I mean, the phone is ringing constantly, then we got CD out here, it's coming out, and more tickets and more tickets. There's actually two deposits that give me a lot of tickets. Maybe we can rotate them in the county, spread them out to other JPs, I don't know.
That's, that's only my opinion, my suggestion.
Thank you, Judge.
Yes, ma'am.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposition? Motion carries. Thank you, Judge.
Thank you, Your Honor, Commissioner.
3.14 Discussion and Appropriate Action. Monthly Report from District Clerk Ms. Maricela Gonzalez for the month of July 2024. Morning, Ms. Money.
Good morning, Judge Commissioners.
Ms. Gonzalez, just inquiring, for the month of July, there was no grand jury?
We did not have grand jury, Judge. It's, uh, Judge Avascal's turn to, uh, impound a grand jury. Um, we do have, um, an order to qualify a grand jury August the twenty-eighth, which he will be doing next week at the Rodeo Arena. At nine o'clock.
Judge Lee, OLS cases, where do they show up? In Ms. Money's report or in his report?
They, they, she's had them here before, yes. Where it says total OLS cases filed to this fiscal year, on that last page, it says ninety?
One of them.
Yes.
And usually, um, Commissioner, what I do is, I do a breakdown, um, every month when we have grand jury. Excuse me. Excuse me. Um, the OLS cases are predominantly smuggling cases, and I will, um, note them down under the smuggling of persons. Um, for the month of July, unfortunately, we did not have grand jury, so they're not, um, on there. Um, but if you, um, turn the page, I do have a chart, and on there, um, I have a comparison to the previous year, and we do have a number of OLS cases, um, for the fiscal year of October twenty-two to September twenty-three. Um, number of OLS cases presented in my office were ninety. Um, from October twenty-three to September, we're not done yet, but, uh, September of twenty-four, um, we have already ninety cases that were filed. Yes, we still have two months to go, so we don't know how many cases are going to be filed, um, at the end of this fiscal year.
Other questions? I entertain a motion. Motion by Commissioner Urcavá. Is there a second? Second by Commissioner Urdenda. Further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposition? Motion carries. 3.15 Discussion and Appropriate Action. Approval to Hire Full-Time Deputy Clerk for the Office of the District Clerk, effective July twenty-third, twenty-twenty-four, to fill vacancy. Motion by Commissioner Urcavá. Is there a second? Second by Commissioner Urdenda. Further discussion? All in favor? Any opposition? Motion carries. 3.16 Discussion and Appropriate Action. Approval for Chief Deputy District Clerk Dora Valderas and Deputy Clerks Alida García and Veronica Ibada to attend the twenty-twenty-four LGS Users Conference on November twentieth through the twenty-fourth in Irving, Texas.
Judge and Commissioner, so every year, LGS puts out a user conference. Every year, LGS, um, puts out new information, um, for LGS. Every year, I've tried to take or send my staff to, um, Irving, Texas, so that they can get hands-on training for, um, LGS. Um, unfortunately, it has not been in my budget. I would love to be able to send some of my staff so that they can get hands-on training. Um, my office will remain open. I'm hoping that you will allow them to go and experience this training and that they can come back and, uh, show the rest of the staff the information that they learned. I would appreciate them the opportunity.
Was it not in your budget or was just not allowed?
It was not in my budget, um, in previous, uh, years. And so I'm hoping that you will allow them the opportunity to travel to Irving.
Questions?
Ms. G, I see on some of them that, uh, are they traveling together?
They will be traveling together.
Okay.
Uh, one clerk will be taking their, her car. Um, they will be traveling, it's, uh, Wednesday, it starts Wednesday after lunch. It'll be Wednesday, Thursday, and Friday. Uh, they will be traveling, um, Tuesday after work. It's a long way to Irving, Texas. Um, they, um, anticipate to travel, um, halfway there, so they will travel, uh, to Waco, spend the night in Waco, and then, uh, in the morning, drive from Waco the rest of the way.
And the hotel rooms, uh, they don't, they don't add up?
No, because.
It's, uh, four times six is two forty. You got two hundred and five.
Yes, um, because the registration is included in all the rooms. Um, one of them is a single occupancy, and her, one of the rooms is, um, six twenty, and that includes the, the two night and the registration, and the other two, it's four thirty for, uh, both girls, two girls, and that includes the registration, and that's a double occupancy.
I'm sorry, it's the meals. The meals is, uh.
Two forty.
Two forty.
I'm sorry.
That was. You got two oh five.
I'm sure it was a typo, Ms. Gonzalez.
It was a little typo, I apologize. I. It should be two oh five for, for Audrey O'En.
It's two forty?
I'm sorry.
It's sixty dollars per day and there's four days, so it's two hundred and forty dollars, but the, but the notation reflects two hundred and five dollars. At, on the voucher, Ms. Gonzalez, on the first page, to your first page, right here, it says two oh five, and he, Commissioner Alonso saying it should reflect two forty.
Oh, okay.
So instead of eight twenty-five, it'll be eight sixty.
Okay, I'll need to correct that.
Motion to approve.
Any other questions? I have a motion by Commissioner Alonso Carmona. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Urcavá. Further discussion?
Yes, Judge, if I can add, or maybe I'll report to Ms. Gonzalez that, uh, records management funds that we collect are also used for training expenses.
Okay, thank you.
Good to know, after all these years. Thank you. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposition? Motion carries.
Thank you.
3.17 Discussion and Appropriate Action. Monthly Report from County Clerk Mr. Mario García for the month of July twenty-twenty-four.
Judge and Commissioner, pretty average month, uh, although, uh, September first, we find out what else is increasing as far as fees, which I will be bringing up to the District's Court. I also want to, uh, inform the board that, um, attending the election seminar up in Austin last week, uh, a big emphasis was placed on our hands as far as organizing security for this, uh, big election coming up in Austin. I don't think I need to emphasize how all the hype between doing, uh, with this particular election, but security is going to be a major concern, and, uh, and, uh, Ms. Sandoval was there as well, and we both agree that we need to, uh, schedule perhaps a little, uh, orientation with the Sheriff's Department and law enforcement. We will be depending on them very much, even during the early voting period, extended hours, and election day.
Thank you. Other questions?
Are, are the, uh, I don't know, that's, uh, the ballot for popular, are they going to be impounded or not?
It just depends on if somebody comes and asks, it has to be a formal request to the district judge by two, uh, registered voters asking for them to be impounded, so we, we won't know if they'll be impounded until before the elections. We have two registered voters that feel that it's a need to be reg, uh, impounded. They will make that request to the district attorney, Mr. Saldaña. Mr. Saldaña will then put it into a petition, request that the district judge sign that, and if the district judge feels there's enough there, they'll sign up the petition to impound. And at that point, that order, and on there, it will specifically say, typically, what the district attorney's office will stipulate on there specifically if they want DPS or the sheriff's office and where they want the ballots to be impounded. All that's in the order, so.
What'll be available for the period here?
We can, we can have, we can have a discussion, Mr. García, with Ms. Sandoval and in your office and the sheriff's office and Texas Highway Patrol, so that we can have more boots on the ground during election time for, I mean, it is a, it's a, it's a big election. It's a presidential election, um, and we can have some discussion and some engagement as to what we can do. Um, as you're aware, we have installed, um, the metal detectors moving forward, um, here at this courthouse and at the, um, historical courthouse as a precautionary measure moving forward as well. You're welcome. I entertain a motion for the county clerk's report. Motion by Commissioner Urcavá. Is there a second? Second by Commissioner Urdenda. Further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposition? Motion carries. 3.18 Discussion and Appropriate Action. Approval for Reimbursement of Registration Fee for Clerk Janie Campos to Attend Identical Vital Statistics Mandate Fingerprint on July thirtieth, twenty-twenty-four. This is a reimbursement. Motion by Commissioner Urcavá.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Urdenda. Further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
3.19 Discussion and Appropriate Action. Monthly Report from Dimmitt County Assistant Fire Chief Mr. David Torres for the month of June and July twenty-twenty-four.
Good morning, Judge. Good morning, Commissioner.
Good morning. Mr. Torres, I have the report from July. Do you have June's by chance?
Yes, ma'am, I do.
Because I don't have June's.
Yeah, I think it was tabled in the last.
In the last, yeah.
Uh-huh. Did you?
I'll take it. Thank you.
Yes, ma'am. I believe from that, uh, you could see that on, for the month of June, we had a pool of work hours.
Questions of Mr. Torres? If there are no questions, I'll entertain a motion. Motion by Commissioner Urdenda. Is there a second? Second by Commissioner Urcavá. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposition? Motion carries. 3.2 Discussion and Appropriate Action. Approval to Accept Grant Reimbursement from Texas Forest Service for the amount of one thousand three hundred eighty-two dollars for the environment insurance.
The, uh, the reimbursement is coming from the Texas Forest Service. Uh, every year, we pay a certain amount for our insurance, uh, for wellness and sickness insurance. Um, so we went ahead and we applied for this grant. It's a continuous grant, so every year, we're able to apply for it, uh, if nothing changes. So what that's going to do is that's going to reimburse whatever the county paid for our insurance. That's going to go back into.
Perfect. I have a motion by Commissioner Urdenda. Is there a second? Second by Commissioner Urcavá. Further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposition? We have an abstention from Commissioner Juan. Juan, he's not here. 3.21 Discussion and Appropriate Action. Approval to Accept Grant from the Texas A&amp;M Forest Service for a two thousand three Stewart Stevenson truck cargo two by, excuse me, two point five ton four by four.
Once again, Judge, this is another grant that the fire department applied for. We did receive it. Uh, this truck is going to be re, retrofitted into a brush truck. Uh, if you all can, I don't have the picture in front of us, but.
We have pictures here.
It's not gonna, the cost of the truck is not going to be through the county. The only thing that's going to be, as far as, uh, expenditure is going to be the upping of the truck, which is, uh, the, uh, emergency lights as well as a radio and siren. Uh, also, there will be a, uh, skid unit that will be placed on the truck. That's also was approved through the brand as well, so that's what we're receiving as well.
The value of the truck is one hundred and seventy-six thousand four hundred and twenty-nine.
Yes, sir.
Great job, guys.
I entertain a motion.
Motion.
Motion by Commissioner Urcavá. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Urdenda. Further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposition?
I see.
Move, we have one abstention.
Judge, I also wanted to, uh, just let the District's Court know, as well as yourself, that, um, we have up to a hundred and eighty days to update the truck. So that's including the, uh, it does need to be painted as well.
Just to be painted.
Yes, sir.
Once the truck is painted, it's, no, no, it's, uh, we can do that as well, so. But in this, uh, yeah?
Go ahead.
Sorry. Uh, on this grant we're working on, and we were able to succeed on those. Uh, we're going to continue working on grants, but we find out that there's also grants available for training, equipment, for whatever they have, and new trucks. As they say, we apply for a new truck, the state pays ninety percent and the county pays ten percent. So, uh, these grants are available through the Texas Forest Service, which we've been trying for years. This year, we were lucky enough to be accepted as a recipient.
Thank you.
Also, Judge, I did also want to thank, uh, Commissioner Urcavá for her assistance on Friday afternoon. We did have a, uh, brush park there in the city of Asherton. We did go in ahead and, uh, respond to that area, and she was able to let us use her equipment as well as, uh, two of the employees that came to show up and help as well. So I just wanted to say thank you to Commissioner Urcavá on that.
Awesome.
Thank you, ma'am.
Perfect. Thank you.
Thank you.
3.22 Discussion and Appropriate Action. Monthly Report from Victory Ambulance for the months of June and July twenty-twenty-four.
Good morning.
Morning.
Sorry, it was worth texting, sorry. Uh, let's see, for the month of June, y'all have the reports, like, they said y'all both of them, no?
We only have July's.
Just July.
Yes, sir. Do you have June's?
I have the numbers, but, uh, they did send it because I went into the email this morning to get it out, and it was sent.
Yeah, we don't have it. Sure, go ahead. Go ahead. Sure, go ahead. Go ahead.
So for the month of June, we had a total of, it looks like 209 calls, 209 calls. We had a total of 50 emergencies, 37 refusals, 48 transfers, 24 telepads, 15 discharges, six doctors' appointments, 10 home cares, 10 MBAs, and one DOA for that month. And for July, we had a total of 199 calls. We had 39 emergency calls.
How many was your total for July, you said?
For July, it was 199.
I see it. Thank you.
Appreciate it.
The total of 39 emergencies, 33 refusals, 59 transfers, 23 telepads, 10 discharges, 6 doctors' appointments, 6 home cares, 22 MBAs, and one DOA.
Mr. Olivares, let me ask you a question on the record. Because you're the one that's out there, not me.
Yes, ma'am.
Predominantly, in terms of call predominantly, who are, what's the meat and potatoes of your calls in what area?
In...
Like, in terms of, do you get a lot of calls in Carrizo, in the city of Carrizo, city of Asherton, city of Biggles? Like predominantly, where are your calls from?
In, but I want to say that the majority are within the city.
Of?
I'm sorry.
Carrizo.
Yes, ma'am. I want to say that the majority of your calls are from the city. We're pretty close even with the, between the county and the cities, but I think we have more within the city.
Within city limits.
Within city limits, yeah.
How many units do you have? Do you have like a certain number of units that are allocated for the city of Carrizo Springs?
For the entire town.
But do you have any in particular that's, okay, this is going to be Carrizo, this one's going to be for Biggles, this one's going to...
No, it's covered for the entire town this year. So we have a total of four trucks. We run two 24-hour trucks a day, one day truck, and then after the day truck, basically clocks out, we have an unlimited.
But the two 24s?
And those two 24s are used to do everything within either the county and, which is one is allocated always to the county. It will respond anywhere in the county.
But not allocated to do EMS? Because you use that truck in the track first?
Out of the two 24s, we use one of them to do, if we have to do tractors and whatnot. But there's always one that is...
That's why I say because they're either located for the county. They're not, we have one.
One is allocated for the county.
Correct. And the other one does whatever it comes to.
Whatever, whether it be called at the county or whether it be used like...
The record is only a one. Distributed for the county.
Correct. Correct.
Other questions?
Have you guys been using the ATV that was donated by the county?
We haven't received it yet.
My God.
No, ma'am, we haven't received it yet. So, well, I mean, we spoke to the judges that I checked on before us. We're waiting.
They really, they already came in.
They did come in, Commissioner Noguacava, but we have not transferred it out because of the legality of it and because the contract is coming up.
Are we allowed to, since they're, they're awarded under bits? We assist them on that?
We can. We specifically inquired from the governor's office, and we have to have an agreement with them that they sign, which we've already discussed with Mr. Olivares and Mrs. Perez, in which we have to have an agreement that we're allowing them to use it. I use an example, like the sheriff's office allows them to have some radios through the Operation Stone Guarding rent. But we have to have a formal agreement that's signed between the county judge and their office. However, we have not done that yet because, as I spoke to Ms. Perez, we have a hiccup in terms of the billing of, between the city and Carrizo Springs for EMS services, which Mr. Perez and I have discussed. It is the reason why we have not been able to get them the ATV. An additional information to that was whenever the ATVs were ordered by Ms. Rodriguez, it was supposed to be a gurney ATV, and it's not a gurney ATV. Yes. So the governor's office said we had to include other language before we can give it to them so that they can sign it. Other questions?
You guys have two ambulances that had ordered. You guys replaced both of them or just one?
We replaced one. We had, because we had purchased two of them. We had purchased two of them, and that, one of the second ones that we replaced, uh, bought, replaced the burnt one. So, yeah, but the other one, so we have a total of, right now, we have five out of the six that we have. Yeah. I'm sorry, you seem mad. It's hard to try and remember very comfortably.
We have to de-say five ambulances.
Yeah. I had to count because I, yeah.
So you guys are pending one.
Yes, ma'am. Yeah.
Is that one going to be replaced?
Uh, we're still looking into it. Yes, ma'am.
If there are no further questions, I will entertain a motion. Motion by Commissioner Noguacava. Is there a second? Second by Commissioner Juan Cármona. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposition? Motion carries. 3.23. Thank you, Mr. Olivares. 3.23 Discussion and Appropriate Action: Proposed 2024 Total Tax Rate Record Vote.
Good morning, Judge. Commissioner.
Good morning.
Just a recap on the worksheets for the tax rates for this year. The non-revenue tax rate was .3312. The voter approval tax rate, which is your highest tax rate you can adopt, is .3361. The adopted tax rate for 2023 currently is at .2850. So I just need your proposal for your 2024 tax rate.
Questions? With that being said, the recommendation of my office is to, based on the conversations with our auditor and our treasurer, and the health of our county, and the best interest of our constituents, the recommendation of the county judge was to put the tax rate at .2800.
Okay, with that being said, that falls below the non-revenue tax rate, which will then, there will be no need to have a public hearing.
That is correct.
So then the next step would be to place the proposed tax rate in the newspaper and then wait for the adoption of the tax rate, which I believe would be on September 9th.
September the 9th. Yes, ma'am. Go ahead, Commissioner.
Is .28 cents the highest we can go or...
No, the highest we can go is to increase it a .3312 without having to have a voter to put it on for the constituents to dim it to vote.
I'm afraid that later on, when, I know that beds are starting to fall down, then we have to come back. You know, people seem to think that he has 65 million.
Can you talk on the white, Commissioner?
That we have 65 million, yes. Our budget is about 25 million a year. So divide that by three, we don't even have enough for two and a half years. You know, and then we go up on the taxes, which is going to be later on, and then that's going to be the hardest part whenever we have to raise taxes again. Well, whenever, you're all going to be here, but, I mean, you know, that's the reason I'm asking.
Go ahead, Mr. Perez.
Okay, Commissioner, will you say if you have, that we've got 60 million, and it's three years, but you've got to remember, we're not going to stop receiving revenue. There's other places that we receive revenues from.
It's not working.
There's other places that we receive revenues from, and so it's not going to be the whole 25 million that you're going to be using up. So if, let's suppose you're $5 million short, so, and you have to make up to raise, to keep the tax rate down. It's going to be a minimal amount. I'm just assuming, let's suppose you get 5 million. So going out that way, you've got a long way to go before we actually get, use up all the money.
Before you deplete all the funds.
Yes, before you deplete them.
Right.
So it's not just, you don't stop receiving any revenues.
I understand that, but our sales taxes have been falling down also. They haven't been coming as strongly as they used to. Our citations, pretty soon, we're all going to be, you all are going to be looking at something different. That's why I'm asking.
I understand that, but right now, we're...
But I think that's where we have to have accountability for each department in terms of the citations. If we're not getting citations, then we have to hold our constables accountable. We need to get our sheriff's office accountable to increase those citations so that they can bring in more revenue.
We can't, we can't set a quota on the...
Well, no, we're not setting a quota, but what I'm saying is...
We can't tell them either to do more tickets.
Well, we can't tell them to do more tickets, but we can tell them to try to be out there and be more prevalent. I mean, because according to Commissioner Juan, he said he's driving 70 miles an hour. People are going 85, passing him, and nobody's stopping him. That's breaking the law. That's not meeting a quota. That's breaking the law. You stop somebody for breaking the law, you give them a ticket? It's not, it's not a matter of us meeting a quota. We're not going to meet a quota. I mean, there has to be some kind of accountability because if not, at the end of the day, he's right. We're going to be left without money.
So what we're doing is reducing the expenditures or the revenues to meet the expenditures. So we don't build up another big, keep adding big amounts to the balance. Okay?
Other questions?
Commissioner Cármona, does it still just be a proposal? You still have on the September 9th to actually vote on it. So you can have more discussion with the judge or with the commissioners.
What we recommend is we should stick with it. So I don't have a problem, like I say, I don't want to be the only bad guy around here, so... But I am anyway, bitter. You know, it's just an understanding that I have that I look at everything.
Right. I mean, you can definitely, most definitely, throw a number out there that you want, and we vote on it. I mean, that's the luxury of us having a court, is that we can all have different opinions in the majority rules.
Right. Correcto.
I mean, we can increase, and I agree, and I had this discussion at nauseam with Mr. Perez. We can go with the .3312, but what that means is Dimon County will be, will have a lot of revenue, obviously, but how does that affect our constituents? I mean, I'm a taxpayer here, you're a taxpayer, the people that are here, I suppose, are taxpayers. And if we increase the taxes, it's great for the county, for business, because we're going to get a lot of increase in revenue. But then now we're imposing a higher tax rate on our constituents. And as you know, inflation has gone through the roof, and not everybody has the same socioeconomic status that can afford to pay .3312 on a tax rate for their home, for their property, for their land. So if we increase it to .3312, which is a max that we can go without putting it to a vote in an election, we can do that in the county. We, I think, I'm comfortable to say that we'll be above water and we'll make, we'll have a lot of revenue. But it's going to affect our constituents, because now the constituents' taxes are going to go up. And although the, although that the evaluations have gone down, I mean, there's, you can have evaluations go down, but if you have a high percentage in interest per tax rate, it's going to come out the same, if you will. And so it was my humble opinion in speaking and getting the advice from our county auditor and our treasurer that if we kept it at this number, that although we wouldn't be making a lot of money, I mean, we're still going to get revenue. There's still going to be revenue because taxes, people are going to pay their taxes. I thought, looking at the balancing act of it, in my opinion, as a chief budgeting officer of this county, that I would rather the county have a lower tax rate so that we can save our taxpayers' money. But that's me, and it's one vote, and if you guys want to go with a different number, we can.
Will it affect if we leave it or is that...
No, I mean, we can leave it at .2850. The reason why we went with .2800 is based on the numbers Mr. Perez gave me and the interest in sinking Mr. Ortiz gave me. .2800 was, I think, maybe a couple of dollars less. I mean, but it can stay at .2850. What hurt, what's hurting us right now, Commissioner Noguacava, as you know, the last meeting, is that the evaluations came way under. That's what's hurting us. Because we could leave it at .2850 if the evaluations had stayed the same or they had increased, correct, Ms. Mary?
Correct.
But because the evaluations went down, now instead of, you know, charging so much money, you're not going to get the same amount because the evaluations went down.
And just going to give back with us?
No. And unfortunately...
And normally, whenever your values go up, your tax rates come down.
Correct.
In this case, your values went up. I mean, yeah, your values came down, sorry.
Correct.
So your tax rate is going to be higher. So that's why in the past, we've had, you know, high values, so we were able to have a very low tax rate.
Correct.
You can keep it at 2850, you know, with no problem, and still you won't have to have a public hearing.
Exactly.
Because you're still well under the non-revenue tax rate.
What's hurting us right now is the evaluations of property. And that has nothing to do with the county specifically. It comes out of the Dimon County appraisal, and I want to make that clear for the record, that it's not the commissioners'.
That's what I'm asking.
Okay, I want to put, I want to... I want to put that on the record.
Did she get back to you?
No. And I want to put that on the record, that it's not the commissioners' court or the judge that's, that's does the valuation of these properties. And we come, we, we have to, we work with, we work with the numbers that are given to us and the numbers that were provided. Unfortunately, the evaluations went down. So therefore, now we're having to be put in a situation, more importantly myself, with Mr. Perez, to look at a number that I feel is in the best interest of our constituents who pay taxes in Dimon County. And like I said, we can very well address Commissioner Juan's concern about that some, in three years, we're going to run out of money. I will completely disagree with you on that part, but if it makes you feel better, we can go with the .3312. However, that's going to be something that's going to resonate with the taxpayers because they're going to have to pay more taxes. And what we're trying to do in looking at the totality of the circumstances, looking at everything that was involved, we're still going to get revenue. We're just not going to get as much revenue as we did. I can tell you right now with all sincerity and certainty that we are not poor. The county's not poor. The county is not being depleted of any money. We're not in the red. We are still above water. And as our auditor said, and you remember when we had the auditor here, the audits, they're telling us we have too much money for purposes of getting red flagged by IRS and whatnot. So we, we are, we still have funds coming in, and they're going to keep coming in because people are going to be paying, and we have other sources of revenue, whether it be the JPs or the golf courses or whatnot. But, excuse me? Minerals, correct. But my recommendation, like I said, is a .2800. If you guys don't want that, you can say another number, but that's my recommendation.
Judge, with all due respect, I'm not saying that you made a wrong decision. I'm saying that a lot of people believe we have a lot of money, and you know, you're an attorney, and you know numbers. If we start spending a lot of that stuff, it'll be gone pretty soon. There, at the old, the old days, you're going to say, well, that was too old. But people were sitting home, that they would only work 24 hours a day, and that's all they would get paid. I, myself, and just like you say, I'm just one vote. I'm just making you aware that this can happen again. The oil is not going to be there forever. I guarantee you that. And... And, and, and that I know because I've been talking to some of the people that are drilling. They say that unless there's another shell down there, that, that, that they'll be able to dig. But right now everything's slowing down. The oil is going down, so that means that the value that we get from the, from their drilling is not going to be the same. That's all I'm saying.
No, I, I.
To me, it don't matter what, if you want to vote twenty-six, you want to go twenty-five, whatever. I'm, I'm just one vote. That's all I'm saying.
No, I agree one hundred percent. And believe me, if you could be a fly in the wall in my office, you would know that I had these conversations with Mr. Pereira because I agree with you one hundred percent. I, I would hate for us to, two, three years down the road, that we have to start cutting hours, that we have to start laying people off. That is not what anybody wants to see. Dimon County is one of the biggest employees of Dimon, employers of Dimon County. We don't want that. I agree with you. And I sat down and had these conversations with Mr. Pereira because I was not comfortable initially after speaking to him and speaking to Mr. Ortiz and getting the numbers from Ms. Mary. I was not comfortable with point twenty-eight zero zero or even point eight twenty-eight five zero because it's huge. But we have to take in mind moving forward, the accountability also of each department, how we spend money. You know, we have to be financially conservative as well. We can't just, you know, and that's, that's where we come in through the budget. And in the budget, you know, you know, unfortunately, let's just, I'll just use Ms. Mary for example. She wants two more positions. Unfortunately, Ms. Mary, given the fact that our revenue is projected to look like this and we're not going to have a lot of money, we cannot give you the two positions you want. And that's something that Ms. Mary's going to have to respect and appreciate if, as a public servant, that we're going to have to change our budget moving forward if the valuations continue to keep going down. It's just, we have two options. The valuations keep going down and down. We have to find, figure out from the appraisal district, one, what's going on? Or two, we start increasing taxes and it's not going to be no fault of anybody's other than how the taxes are being valued. Any other questions? I'll entertain a motion. Motion by Commissioner Alonso Carmona. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Urenda. Further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposition?
I oppose. I would have preferred to stay the same, twenty-eight fifty.
We have an opposition by Commissioner Rualcava. Three point two four, discussion and appropriate action, approval of twenty-twenty-four planning calendar.
Yeah, this is just a formality of the calendar put forward to adopt the tax rate on September ninth.
I'll entertain a motion.
Motion.
Motion by Commissioner Urenda. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Rualcava. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposition? Motion carries. Thank you, Ms. Urenda. Three point two five, discussion and appropriate action, monthly report from county commissioners for the month of June. We'll start with Commissioner Precinct One. Commissioner Urenda, anything to report?
Judge, we're just following up with a maintenance, greater maintenance of shredding right away some, on the county roads and, uh, blading, uh, roads, uh, capital roving. We've got signed over today this week to work into a typical maintenance.
Any questions of Commissioner Urenda? Precinct Two, Commissioner Alonso Carmona, report.
That we're still working on County Road one seventy-three. In fifteen forty-two, fifteen forty-two, uh, the crew rep dropped thirty-two loads of scrap material. We're still not done. We're about quarter of the way down, so, uh, that's what we're working on.
Questions of Commissioner Carmona? Precinct Three, report. Three and six, Commissioner Juan Carmona.
Judge, we're off the bar, so we're just maintaining the.
Questions of Commissioner Juan? I apologize. I need a moment. Commissioner Precinct Four, Five and Seven, Commissioner Rualcava, report.
Judge, we're installing a new cover on the Austin Road.
Any questions of Commissioner Rualcava? If there are no questions, I'll entertain a motion.
Motion.
Motion by Commissioner Alonso Carmona.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Urenda. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposition? Motion carries. Three point two six, discussion and appropriate action, approval for Lady of Guadalupe Catholic Church to use the picnic tables from the golf course for their annual festival, festival, August thirty-first, twenty-twenty-four, precinct one.
Judge, this is, uh, based on the agenda for, uh, to get clearing on, on, uh, like it says, allowing the church to utilize the picnic tables for the festival. People use them to sit when it's hot weather. They're always looking for a place to take a break. We've used, uh, some of these tables in the past and I'm just trying to make the transfer.
Any other questions? I entertain a motion to approve. Motion by Commissioner Alonso Carmona. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner who was it?
Me.
Rualcava? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposition? Motion carries. Three point two seven, discussion and appropriate action, approval to approve golf course contracts for the year of twenty-twenty-four, twenty-twenty-five. This particular contract is for the school, correct, Commissioner?
Correct. It's for the, uh, uh, school, uh, golf team, the school golf.
The high school golf team?
Yes.
Questions? Why?
Mr. Rualcava, I mean, the request is under her.
I wouldn't think we needed to, I mean, Commissioner Urenda is the department head of that, the golf course. I wouldn't think we need to table it, but.
Just to let you all know, the contract is basically a repetition of last year's contract.
Are you motioning to table it?
No, I'm not.
Or do you want a motion to table?
Motion to table.
I have a motion to table. Is there a second?
Second.
I have a second by Commissioner Rualcava. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
I oppose.
I oppose.
Guys, I think we need to make some adjustments quickly in agenda to look at, to review this carefully because we're tabling some and we're not tabling others. We need to decide what's going to be. Either we're going to table or we're going to discuss. I said before, there's people, there are elected officials here that can do the report or their employees or supervisors to write in. And we table and then there's some that we say, no, okay, go ahead. You're the supervisor. So we need, it's either we approve it or we don't. We go forward. Because we're just picking and choosing yes and no. Some yes, some no.
May I, Judge?
Go ahead.
Judge, I mean, uh, Commissioner, it has created confusion because in the past, as you may recall, for example, the golf course report, whenever it was presented, the representative was a year because of course she has to be at the golf course. If there was any questions, I was more than glad to answer questions, but I was advised that she needed to be here. Even though the questions are still coming to me because, you know, she has to ask me for, for, for changes, you know, within.
That's why, that's why I'm saying we need to put in the agenda to clarify all this because it's, some we do, some we don't.
But I don't think it needs to be an agenda to clarify anything. We've just discussed it right now and moving forward. That's how we do it. I mean.
We've looked before on the other ones.
Correct.
Not here, so I mean, and then we always go back, well, it was done this way or it was done that way. This tabling has never been for Commissioners' Court. It was just something that we all decided to do. It's never been brought up for Commissioners' Court. So I don't see a point, but there's some that come and do the report. They're not here, okay, table. They're here to purchase, they're not here, table.
We can go, we can go, we, yes, come on, we can, we, we are. We are, we are wasting the time and we can go back and look at all the, um, all the minutes as to who's tabling these items. And it's, you know, for instance, this particular item, I mean, it's his department, it's this department. I believe he, he's here. If you're, if it's your department and you're here and Mari Vez is not here for sanitation, why should we table it? You're her department head and you can.
We need everything. That's what I'm saying. We need to make sure that we can just, there's somebody that's here to do the report. Let's just.
I, I agree with you, Commissioner. The only, the only problem is whenever there's somebody here and they don't know, then we have to table it. Going back to what Commissioner Alonso said, we've had an issue one time when somebody came and they were a representative, they weren't the department head or they weren't the elected, they were a representative of that office. And he starts asking questions and they don't know, so we have to table it because we don't know. It's happened before. I mean, it really has. We've had it with the sheriffs plenty of times when we've had them come forward and they don't know and the sheriff says we can need to table it. I mean, my personal opinion is, is that if the person is here and they're the department head or the elected official, why do we need to table it? Regardless of who put the item on the agenda.
So there was no need to table Judge Gudner's report. Alicia was here.
But Alicia is not her, yeah, Alicia is not her secretary.
And you can call Rosie.
But then if Rosie doesn't know the answers or the questions to the, or the, uh, answers to the questions we're asking her, then at that point I would say you have to table it because she can't answer for the judge.
I'm just saying, because we keep tabling and tabling and then some we do agree on and some we don't.
I feel that if the report's available, we should be able to review it. Usually if black and white, any and any point, there's questions and somebody's not literally available to answer the question, that we could consider taking that. But if it's a subject or report and everybody can look at it and answer their own questions within the report, I feel we should move forward. So I'm just one vote. Commissioner, our motion failed, so you can still.
It didn't fail. He owes three to two.
Three to two.
Yes, sir. So he can't, you'll just have to have Romani here next month, next week. Three point two eight, discussion and appropriate action, approval to purchase a shredder tractor precinct two.
Judge, there's, we have a ten, uh, ten-year-old, uh, shredder that has already given up. And this is a bikeboard. It comes with the, with the shredder, the, the, the.
The bucket or the bucket?
The bucket and, and other accessories for our county roads. If we have some brush, it's able to cut it and that needs to be shredded.
And where's this coming from, Commissioner?
It's coming from, uh, Aspen.
No, no, I know, but what, where in your budget is this? Because it's sixty-six thousand?
Remember, we talked about it on your budget here.
But is this for the new budget or you're asking for current budget?
For the current, for the current purchase, out of the COs. Pereira was there, so when I asked him.
The COs are current?
It, it was there in the fourteen, but the fourteen didn't get to be placed on the agenda.
He's paying it out for his COs.
No, I understand what he's saying, but he was talking about what we meant with Mr. Pereira. So I thought he meant the new COs we're trying to get.
It's, it's for the.
Current, the current CO.
Yes, sir.
I'll entertain a motion.
Motion.
Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Rualcava. Further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposition?
Judge, next month I'll, we're sitting in the paperwork, but a quarter thousand will be out there, so.
Okay. Three point two nine, discussion and appropriate action, approval to purchase a pressure washer for landfill precinct four.
Judge, can we table it?
Yes.
We have the backup to it.
Yes, ma'am.
Want to table?
Motion to table by Commissioner Alonso.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Urenda. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposition? Motion carries. Three point three, discussion and appropriate action, approval to hire one full-time employee for landfill precinct four. Motion by Commissioner Alonso. Second by Commissioner Urenda. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposition? Motion carries. Four point one, discussion and appropriate action, approval to purchase equipment under the sheriff's forfeiture fund.
Judge, on this one, it's equipment for, uh.
I, I was, on this one, ladies and gentlemen, this is to purchase equipment for the task force officer that's, um, under the DA HSI departments.
How was that?
I'll entertain a motion.
Motion.
Motion by Commissioner Alonso Carmona. Is there a second? Second by Commissioner Urenda. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposition? Motion carries. Four point two, discussion and appropriate action, approval for Jonathan Santanilla and Diego Valdez to attend the annual criminal and civil law conference, September eighteenth through the twentieth in Galveston, Texas.
These are both of my investigators also appointed to this force, part of the treaty.
Motion by Commissioner Rualcava.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Urenda. All in favor?
Aye.
Any oppositions? Motion carries. Four point three, discussion and appropriate action, approval for Sheriff Castaneda to attend the Southwest Border Sheriff's Coalition, Texas Border Coalition, September fifth and sixth in Winter Haven, California.
This is our quarterly meeting. It's going to be held there and, uh, it's right at the state line of California and Yuma, Arizona. It's hosted by Fred Mita Montes, Imperial County Sheriff, uh, California and Sheriff Leon Womack, Yuma. It's Thursday and Friday, but approved up. I'll be leaving Tuesday, about a fifteen, sixteen hour drive. We're ready? Yeah, we're ready. We're good?
I'll entertain a motion. Are there questions?
No.
Motion by Commissioner Alonso Carmona. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Urenda. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposition?
Aye.
I have one opposition. That opposition is Commissioner Rualcava. Four point four, discussion and appropriate action, sheriff's report. Sheriff, where are we at in terms of, in, with your investigations for felony cases?
Pretty much we're caught up and just what's been, needs to be accepted by the district attorney's office. Uh, we've been sending cases over, uh, trying to get them indicted, but it's, it's at his hands over there to accept them.
Questions of the sheriff's report?
Also, Judge, on the citations for precinct four, I did have my deputies, you know, one of them's in Natsdon. I should have the other one in Big Wells, uh, split up or Eighty-three South. It's just, I didn't want them to get in the same place, but it, there's more traffic there in Catarina, Bristol Boulevard is where a lot of the citation are coming from.
That's understandable, Sheriff. I'll entertain a motion. Motion by Commissioner Alonso Carmona. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Urenda. Further discussion regarding the sheriff's report?
I have to continue the report, but I have another question.
Go ahead.
Sheriff, who's your K nine employee?
K nine, Carmona resigned. He went to Aspore County. I'm going to have Dustin Lopez take over since he does help out also with, uh, HSI. So he's going to look for a training. I want to see if I can pay that out of the forfeiture fund so it will come out of ours.
I know we had not a contract, Judge.
We did.
On the K nine, if they need.
We did.
So he has to pay back.
I'll check because I think his contract should be up early.
It's not. It has to be paid. Mr. Pereira's office already advised my office that he has a balance because the contract is supposed to end, I think, October, November.
Okay.
So there's a couple of months that need to be paid to the county. We can have Mr. Pereira's office reach out to your office, um, so that we can get him to do that.
That he will be does the house?
Yes.
Possibly. Yes.
Sheriff, yesterday I received a call to assistance on loading some trailer units up with, like, hot chocolate. What orders were? Remember the grant, they had money left over. We're supposed to get vehicles, but they said we couldn't use it for vehicles as they had given us. They use it for the, uh, for the license plate readers, but they let us, they allow us to buy from the stone.
We want the license plate readers.
That's, that's what I know.
Any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposition? Motion carries. Thank you, Sheriff.
Thank you.
4.1 Discussion and Appropriate Action Status Report for Utility Department. Mr. Hyman's not here. So I have a motion to table. Unless you want to ask Commissioner Orenda a question, Commissioner?
I want you to know, is Mr. Hyman, will we contact like for the electricity?
Yes, ma'am. Commissioner Hyman, if you have a permit, it would be permitted for electricity inspections of Mr. Hyman.
I called for the street lights. They kept saying, for reasons now, they may need to speak to our, our electrician. I'm like, I don't think that one is it. He was like, none of them, but he gives out the permit. So I said, if he sees this, Mr. Hyman.
Motion to table by Commissioner Carmona. Juan Carmona. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner De Lucava. It was Alonso Carmona. I apologize. It's because you guys look so much alike that I confuse you. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposition? Motion carries. 6.1 Discussion and Appropriate Action Monthly Report from County Treasurer, Mr. Oscar Ortiz, for the month of July twenty twenty-four. I have a motion to table by Commissioner Alonso Carmona.
Second.
Second by Commissioner De Lucava. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposition? Motion carries. 6.12, 6.2, excuse me. Discussion and Appropriate Action Monthly Report from County Auditor, Mr. Carlos Paredes, for the month of July twenty twenty-four.
For July, we have collected fourteen million sixteen, fourteen million six hundred and seventeen thousand dollars in current taxes. So we are actually right now three hundred and seventy-three thousand above what we had projected. The sales tax, we had estimated at three billion one hundred and twenty-five thousand. We're at two million six hundred and ninety-six thousand, but we still have July. I mean, yeah, August and September, plus addition, but September is for previous month. So there's, it's going to be way over the three million dollars. Interest, we're also at one point six million. Last year we were, we were at one point two, so we've increased that, but we're pretty high this year and so that should be even higher by the time we finish at the September thirtieth. So in total, we have twenty-one million seven hundred and five thousand, six hundred and thirty-one thousand dollars. If you go to page two, there are your total expenditures. And so total expenditures through July equal to fifteen million five hundred and forty-five thousand, five hundred and ninety-six. So taking the revenues over expenditures were six million one hundred and sixty thousand dollars. Revenues over expenditures.
Questions? I'll entertain a motion.
So move.
Motion by Commissioner Alonso Carmona. Is there a second? Second by Commissioner De Lucava. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposition? Motion carries. 6.3 Discussion and Appropriate Action to Approve the Investment Policy for Fiscal Year Twenty Twenty-Four.
There is no change from last year. And if you all need a copy of it, we didn't make a copy because there is no change from last year. But if you all need a copy, we have it available. It's filed at the county court office.
Now I entertain a motion. Motion by Commissioner Alonso Carmona. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Orenda. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposition? Motion carries. 6.4 Discussion and Appropriate Action Budget Adjustment Number Seventy-Nine for the jail. Ms. Montes, I have a question. Why, why is such a high request for overtime?
Look, last time they tabled, that's why it doubled the budget.
I know, but why, or why are we having so much overtime?
Well, before that, it was, we were short staffed, but I recall that when we had that grant, they were telling us if you missed one day, they, they wouldn't count for the, for the grant. It would just go straight to our budget. And I didn't know about that.
And on the medical supplies, why is such an increase?
We had a lot of medical inmates that needed assistance in medicals.
Are they felony cases or?
Felony and missing minors.
So it looks like we're becoming a hospital at the jail instead of.
Yes, ma'am.
A prison or county jail.
Correct.
Because we had that one, just one case was, we, we had originally got a bill for thirty-six thousand, but it actually went down to what we paid. This deal was twenty-three thousand dollars, just for one patient. And that was the one that the district attorney brought up.
Other questions?
I have a question. On the overtime, as of July, you're already over twelve thousand two hundred. And that's your budget adjustment. So what are you going to do with office in September?
Well, at least we have officers now, so I'm going to try and cut down on, on all the overtime.
Other questions? All in favor?
Both.
Actually, I need a motion.
Both.
Motion by Commissioner Alonso Carmona. Is there a second?
Three.
Second by Commissioner De Lucava. Further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposition? Motion. Motion carries. Thank you. 6.5 Discussion and Appropriate Action Budget Adjustment Number Eighty-One Within the Utility Department. Questions? I'll entertain a motion.
So move.
Is there a second? Second by Commissioner who? De Lucava. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposition? Motion carries. 6.6 Discussion and Appropriate Action Budget Adjustment Number Eighty-Two for the golf course. Other questions?
That eight thousand for the operating supplies, what is that for?
Operating supplies?
Is that the concession stand?
No, because it's, and there's, operating supplies is for like, uh, leaders, uh, leaders string, guys for the, for the leaders, things that you, KCI, you do the KCI.
What do you buy your concession stand items?
There's a item, the line item for that is, is actually called concession stand. Right?
One second. Eight fifteen, is there?
Fifteen?
How this is coming out of operating supplies? It's probably coming out of that one, I'm just checking.
It should be hitting that concession stand, right? We find it. You know, I, just to let you know, Commissioner, I have a question that also to Mr. Paredes, because I told him that it doesn't seem like our items are hitting the proper length. But I know that there is a concession.
I was asking because mine, I was negative. And I was like, why is mine negative? I know I have funding, but because it was being used with the item, my item wasn't there. It exists, so that's what I'm thinking maybe, because they use mine as operating supplies too. So I'm assuming that's where they're getting it from.
Motion by Commissioner De Lucava. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Alonso Carmona. All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. 6.7 Discussion and Appropriate Action Budget Adjustment Number Eighty-Three, Precinct One. Questions? I'll entertain a motion. Motion by Commissioner Alonso Carmona. Is there a second? Second by Commissioner De Lucava. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposition? Motion carries. 6.8 Discussion and Appropriate Action Budget Adjustment Number Eighty-Four for the arena. Motion by Commissioner De Lucava. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner, I mean Commissioner Alonso Carmona. All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. 6.9 Discussion and Appropriate Action Budget Adjustment Number Ninety for JP Number Four. Motion by Commissioner De Lucava. Is there a second? Second by Commissioner Alonso Carmona. All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. 6.10 Claim Docket. General Fund, one million eighty-nine thousand, seven hundred and forty-nine and seventy cents. Dimmitt County Clerk, one thousand four hundred and twenty-three and sixty-eight cents. Dimmitt County Clerk, District Clerk, two thousand seven hundred and forty-two and eighty-seven cents. Dimmitt County Airport, four thousand three hundred and twenty-six. Dimmitt County Golf Course, nineteen thousand five hundred and sixty-eight and eighty-three cents. Courthouse Security, two thousand two hundred and twenty, two thousand two hundred and sixty-three and fourteen cents. Dimmitt Records Management County Clerk, one thousand two hundred and fifty-nine and twelve cents. Utilities, two hundred and forty thousand, eight hundred and seventy-one and forty-four cents. Rodeo Arena, one thousand twenty. Stone Garden, one hundred twenty-five thousand, four hundred and forty-seven and thirty-seven cents. Operation Lone Star Program, twenty twenty-two, fourteen thousand, six hundred and five dollars and fifty-eight cents. Dimmitt County Payroll, four hundred and sixty-five thousand, two hundred and six dollars and one cent. Tax Note Series, twenty twenty-three, four hundred and fifty thousand. Interest and sinking, nine thousand, three hundred and seventy-seven and forty-three cents. COs, twenty eighteen, thirty-one thousand, six hundred and twenty-three dollars. COs, twenty nineteen, thirty-eight thousand, four hundred and nineteen and ninety-two cents. For a grand total of two million, four hundred and ninety-seven thousand, eight hundred and seventy-eight dollars and thirty-five cents. Other questions? Motion by Commissioner Alonso Carmona. Is there a second? Second by Commissioner Orenda. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposition? Motion carries. I will entertain a motion to recess and adjourn the regular commissioners' court meeting. Motion by Commissioner Alonso Carmona. Is there a second? Second by Commissioner De Lucava. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposition? Motion carries. The court will not call the public facility meeting into order. The time is twelve one nine, Mr. Garcia. Let the record reflect that all commissioners and county judges are present. 1.3 Approval Minutes of August fifth, twenty twenty-four. And motion to table the special meeting, meeting August sixteenth, twenty twenty-four, because those minutes are not ready. I'll entertain a motion. Motion by Commissioner Alonso Carmona. Is there a second? Second by Commissioner Orenda. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposition? Motion carries. 2.1 Discussion and Appropriate Action New Business. Commissioner Juan.
Judge, uh, as I told you before, ma'am, uh, Judge, uh, we're still having a lot of problems, ACs. And, uh, now, now they came up with the problem inside where all the controls are outdated. So we're having a lot of problem with that. Also, there's still confusion on, on my part as to who's got what. Because the people from Middle Rio are still following me and wanting to know this and that. So I just wanted to know if you want me to listen to them or just?
I think we need to sit down and talk to Mr. Paredes so that we can get that contract back from Donato, so that we can look at the extent of what is being, is supposed to be covered through that contract by Dimmitt County and what's supposed to be covered by the federal government. So, um, quite frankly, I asked Mr. Paredes last week about that because I'm still, just like you, waiting for Donato. And it's been some time now. US Border Patrol has, the federal government has advices that they are going to continue to lease from the county, which that's a good thing because obviously that's revenue. But we were waiting on Donato's so that we can get the terminology put into words on a contract. So as soon as we can get that, we can sit down with you so that we can look at it. Hopefully it's sooner rather than later.
The reason of saying, Judge, is because they came in, they bypassed the compressor. We weren't aware of it. They even showed up and, and bypassed it. And the compressor burned, the AC compressor. So the thing was still under warranty. Uh, train's going to make it good, but they, they, they need to let us know at least. And they're there and they bypassed it. And I wasn't aware of the problem, that they were having problems. And so like I say.
Still lacking communication.
Compressor's still expensive when they go down. Also, we're still lighting up that place. And we're working on, uh, Middle Rio for reformation. We're starting to pave that, uh.
Parking lot.
Which belongs to the county. So we finally figured out where the boundaries are. So we're just going to go to the, let's hold this where our, our boundaries meet.
Okay.
Unless we get permission from the county attorney to do it all. I don't know what you're talking about. Nobody's asking me here.
I'll entertain a motion to approve the new business as discussed by Commissioner Juan Carmona. Motion by Commissioner De Lucava. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Alonso Carmona. All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. Discussion and Appropriate Action Monthly Report Financial. Thank you. It should reflect the addendum is 2.2. Discussion and Appropriate Action Approval to Contract with Haney for Repair Roof at Middle Rio Grand Development Council and Dollar General. This item was previously put on the agenda, but we needed to have it motioned to table it with the byboard. We're going to get additional bids. We did not, so the request is to go ahead and go with Harney, who's on the byboard to approve. Commissioner Juan knows very well that Middle Rio Grand Building and the Dollar General are in dire need of that roof. We've had, um, many complaints and occurrences that they've reached out to me and reached out to Commissioner Juan in regards to the roof, especially at the Dollar General. So, um, if I can just get a motion.
That's DK Haney. DK Haney.
Where, where are they from?
San Antonio, believe. San Antonio. They've done the Sabala County Courthouse and it's still under warranty twenty years later. So.
How long ago did they do that?
About fifteen years ago and we've never leaked. It's never leaked there. And in fact, right now, they're, they went to review it and making, uh, change, fixing it where there was, whatever issues there are.
Motion by Commissioner De Lucava.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Alonso Carmona. Any other discussion? All in favor? Yes, sir?
I may allow to amend the item from Dollar General to Family Dollar.
Family Dollar. And for it to say DK Haney instead of Harney. Will your motion still stand, Commissioner De Lucava? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposition? Motion carries. 3.1 Financial and Discussion and Appropriate Action Monthly Report from the auditor's office for the public facilities. Is there any questions? Motion by Commissioner. Motion by Commissioner Alonso Carmona. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner De Lucava. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposition? Motion carries. We have the, um, Claim Docket, three point two. Public Facilities is thirteen thousand, one hundred twenty-one and fifty-five cents. Are there any questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Or, excuse me, motion?
Aye.
Motion by Commissioner De Lucava.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Alonso Carmona. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposition? Motion carries. I'll entertain a motion to recess, recess and adjourn the public facilities. Motion by Commissioner Alonso Carmona.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Uranda. All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. This meeting has ended at twelve seventeen.